Good evening, everybody. Live from downtown, it's Tuesday night. Okay. How's everybody doing this evening? I'm going to call the City of Temecula Council Meeting for January the 8th to order. Madam City Clerk, tell you what, let's start with thanking our prelude music, Ms. Susan Miyamoto. Susan, what a pleasure. We'll start off with an invocation. I'm going to lean on City Manager Aaron Adams to give the invocation, and I'll stand for that. And then remain standing. I'm going to ask Skylar Temple to come forward and give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please stand? Please bow your head. Dearly Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day, the privilege to convene in a public gathering and do the work of local government. We give you glory and honor in all the decisions that are made here. We pray for our first responders, they remain safe. We pray for the year ahead, Lord, in 2019, that you will continue to have your hand on the citizens of Temecula, the City Council, the city staff, and we give you all the glory and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. I hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, for the first time in 2019, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
I am here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Oh, I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Nigar.
I am here, and a special welcome to Councilmember Schwenk. This is his first council member, uh, council meeting of all time, so it's going to be pretty cool. I anticipate a long prosperous service by you in the city, so welcome.
Thank you.
You betcha. We have many presentations this evening, and I think we'll, we'll have some fun doing them. The first one, let's see here, I, I want to recognize outgoing Mayor Dr. Matt Ron. Uh, Dr. Ron, I think you just had a fantastic year as mayor. Your theme was Temecula Safe, and it just permeated throughout the whole city, in particular, our residents. I know that you, how many bags did you guys hand out of, of?
Oh, gosh, what was that, 33,000, something like that?
Thirty-three thousand.
Closer to 40,000.
And how, and what was in those bags?
Nothing. It was just the, we just, we like handing out bags, but it was the, the three-minute bag for community preparedness.
So it, it, it reached every resident in Temecula, and it made all the firefighters and all the police officers know just how much our residents appreciated them, and a whole lot more. Um, it's a great pride. I present you the plaque for your service. You betcha, pal. All right. This unmarked gavel goes away. I did not like the sound of it anyway, um, and now that sounds better. All right. All right. Well, let's see what we have next. You know, um, for many a year, going back to the 90s, the council has had prelude music before our council meetings, and many people say, "Well, why?" Well, you know, it's just a nice touch, it sets the tone, it kind of keeps everybody in a good mood, it's seasonal, all of those things. And there's only been maybe, now that I'm thinking back, maybe two people who have done it in the history since we've started it. One was Eve Craig, and she did it for about, I'd say almost 15 years, something of that nature. Pardon? And Susan Jones. But then, when both of them left, we needed somebody to pick up the mantle to do the music, and it's been Susan Miyamoto. Susan, how long has it been?
Eight years.
Eight years now? Well, you know, Susan, um, we have something special for you that Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Stewart's going to give to you. This is now probably the eighth plant we've presented to you over the years, and I have a nice little proclamation I'd like to read. You know what? This one is no less important than the first one. You lend so much levity and beauty to our council meetings, and we really appreciate that. City of Temecula Certificate of Appreciation, presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula to Susan Miyamoto, for unselfishly giving her time and talents organizing and providing beautiful prelude music for city council meetings, recognizing how music and the arts bring culture and beauty to a community. Temecula is truly fortunate to have Susan continually training and mentoring Temecula's next generation of musicians. And I might add, it's not always Susan playing. She's always here with young musicians and mentoring them and setting them up and allowing them to come play. Often, it's their first performance, and we've had many fine performances here. So, um, in witness hereof, I've put my signature, and the city clerk has signed it as well, and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart is going to give this to you, Susan, and we love you. Thank you. And you're welcome to say a few words if you want.
I just love getting my plants every year. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, the next one, Mr. Stewart, I need you back at the dais, because I, since you were sitting next to me, I, I hid your gavel under my hat, okay? So I was almost, if I didn't get reminded by the Assistant City Manager, I might have forgotten, but, um, when the council made their appointments for 2019, Councilmember Stewart, now Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, was also appointed President of the Community Service District. And here, sir, is your gavel. You're very welcome. Would you like to say?
No. It's an honor and a privilege to be able to do this job and to work with Kevin and the Community Services Department. I'm very much looking forward to it, so.
Thank you. Well, you know, we've had something really, really cool happen in 2018. Our, our, our Temecula Valley High School won the California State Division One Girl, Girls Volleyballs. They are true champions, and they're here today to be recognized by the City Council. Ladies, it's so good to see you here, and congratulations. I'm going to read a proclamation, and then we're going to call you up one by one. I just want you to line up here, because we're going to take some photos. So our proclamation says, City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement, presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Temecula 2, and each one of your names are in here, Temecula Valley High School, 2018 CIF California State Division One Girls Volleyball Champions. The City of Temecula congratulates the Temecula Valley High School Girls Volleyball Team on their outstanding accomplishment and effort in earning the 2018 CIF California State Division One Championship. The team had two first-team Southwest League All-League Athletes and two second-team Southwest League All-League Athletes. Temecula Valley High School is one of 10 schools in the nation who received the National Ranking Trophy presented by MAXPreps and the Army National Guard. The team is the first in Riverside County to win a state championship for volleyball. That is quite an accomplishment. We are proud of the team's dedication and talent, and we wish them continued success in the sport of volleyball and in their future. Mayor Pro Tem Stewart is going to go down and present these to you ladies, and if you'd come up when I call your name and stand right up here. And parents, this is a real special time, so if you want to fill the aisles, take photos, there's no pretense here, just do it, okay? Come on down with them. Stu, are you ready? Okay. Team member Jordan Amoy. And Jordan, just come right here, because we're going to take some great pictures. Everybody, Jordan's standing up there alone, Jordan, don't be embarrassed, okay? Samantha Dale. In fact, I, I really should say Champion Jordan Doron. Champion Callie Dubois, or Dubots. Right, Callie?
Dubots.
Dubots, thank you. Gracie Hallie, Champion Gracie Hallie. Champion Haley Henkel. Champion McKenzie Kraus Stewart. Champion Kayla Manning. Champion Carly Shenan. Champion Jasmine West. Recognizing the coach, because you don't get championship teams without championship coaches, Nemeus Costa. Coach Costa? All right. Coach N'Gol Horajil. Did I say that right? What? Oh, okay, Nicole Horajil. Horajil, got it. Thank you. Thank you. Coach Roberto Rodriguez. Ladies and gentlemen, your 2018 Temecula Valley High School CIF State Champions. Parents, have at it. Councilmember Stewart, feel free to get in there. Yeah, sure.
Raffu, turn around, please.
Sure. What, what's, what's the name? Athletic Director for Temecula Valley High School, Grant, what was it? Martin. Grant, come on up, Grant. Alan Williams, the principal here?
He's not.
He's not, okay. All right.
And you know what else is cool? As soon as they're done taking pictures, all of you girls turn around, okay, and you can see yourself on the screen, okay? On the big screen.
Oh, look at that.
There'll be about 8,000 people at home watching you right now, okay?
So. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I, can I say something real quick?
Of course, yes.
Only because I got to watch these young ladies all season long, having a daughter in the TVHS volleyball program, and so I can attest to how talented these ladies are, the journey that they went on. It is very, very commendable, and I don't know if Coach, Head Coach Raffu wants to say anything, but I, it was mentioned in the presentation, but I just want to read this, because this is what the school was recognized today for. I'm, I'm reading it out of the press release, basically on the MAXPreps website. It says, "MAXPreps is pleased to announce that the Temecula Valley Golden Bears have officially been named to the 14th Annual MAXPreps Tour of Champions presented by the Army National Guard, which is in its ninth year honoring volleyball. This is one of the most prestigious team awards in all of high school sports and is an exclusive honor reserved for 100 of the top teams nationwide. In order to be eligible, a team must win a state championship and be highly ranked in the MAXPreps national rankings. For volleyball, only 10 of the country's best are invited, and with nearly 20,000 competing varsity teams, this puts the Golden Bears ahead of 99.9% of their opponents." So ladies, well done.
Coach, how many of your, how many of these ladies are returning for 2019, 2020? Returning, returning for the following, yeah?
No. Gracie.
Awesome. Awesome, okay. Any chance at another championship? All right. All right. Go for it. All right. Okay. Thank you. Glad to have you, ladies. Congratulations. You're welcome to go, whatever you please. You're welcome. You're very welcome. So, here we are about to hand out some service pins, and we have three that I'd like to hand, hand out, and I wanted to hand them out personally, because they're not only meaningful to the city, but meaningful to me. The first one I'd like to recognize is a colleague of mine now that recently just got elected to the City Council, Councilmember Schwenk. We appointed Councilmember Schwenk about five years ago to the Community Services Commission, and oftentimes, sometimes commissioners take the job and they just sort of go along with the ride, or sometimes they get on the horse, take the reins, and say, "Follow me." Zach was one of the gentlemen who would get on the horse and say, "Follow me, we're going to do some great things." And it's funny, because this was the natural progression for you, to step up and join the City Council. You were at just about every event, and you didn't just show up, you participated and made everybody feel welcome, and made everybody enthusiastic about being part of the City of Temecula. Zach, if you'd come on down, I'd like to give this to you personally. Congratulations, pal.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Appreciate that so much. Thank you.
The next five-year service pin I'd like to hand out is a, is a guy I call the Big Bopper, okay? And there's a reason, because his name is JR Richardson, okay, who, for those of you who weren't around in the 50s, okay, was known as the Big Bopper. JR, come on up. JR, again, in the, come on up, JR. JR, again, is one of those servants that wanted to get on the commission, he's on the Traffic Commission, and you know what? Again, attends all the meetings, participates. When citizens have an issue where they need to have a stop sign, or they have a safety issue, the Public Traffic Safety Commission takes up that issue, and if warranted, it eventually makes its way to the City Council. You guys play a vital role, and it's quite the honor that you've been doing that job for five years, so it's my pleasure to present this five-year pin to you. You're very welcome. Now, can you imagine a 10-year pin? Mr. Gary Watts, come on down, Gary. I almost called you Gary Yeomans, because that's what the sign says, but Gary, come on down. Now, you spent, your whole 10 were not on the Planning Commission, correct? You started where?
Local Review Board, Old Town Local Review Board, and then one stop at the Traffic and Safety Commission, and then on to the Planning Commission.
And you had a long history in, with the State of California Parks, didn't you?
Yeah, 32 years with State Parks.
So appointing Gary was really a no-brainer. He brings so much experience to the City of Temecula, and again, willing to serve for what is now, I think, $100 a meeting, or it comes to about $100 a month. The work that gets put in is amazing. Anybody who sticks out serving the city for 10 years needs to be commended, and I commend you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind staying down there?
I will stay down.
I think I'm the next longest-tenured person at the dais, so I have the privilege and honor of presenting you, Mr. Mayor, with your 20-year pin, and if I recall correctly, you started this journey on the Planning Commission nearly 20 years ago, or 18 years ago, and have served the City of Temecula in incredible fashion. I don't think anybody here that knows you would argue that you love this city, and it shows, and it's a pleasure and honor for all of us to work for you and a City Council that loves the city the way you do. So, Mike, it's my honor to present you with your 20-year pin. Congratulations.
Much. I have my 15-year pin, this one's coming off. It will not be on eBay, but thank you all. 20 years, and the honor is truly mine. I was going to ask you to pin me, Mr. City Manager, but then people would think we're going steady. Okay? Exactly. All right. Okay. All righty. Madam City Clerk, I think we've reached the portion of the meeting where we have public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments. We have one public comment on a non-agendized item, and we have one public comment on item number six on Consent Calendar.
Okay, so we'll hear them both now. The rules need to be read. I believe we have a video for the reading of the rules, if we can queue that up.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the Consent Calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the Consent Calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filled out and filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing comments, or public comments, rather, and the Consent Calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record.
For all public hearings or council business items on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filed with the City Clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Madam City Clerk, can you call the?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Tracy Hamm, to be followed by David Maddox.
Councilmembers and distinguished city leaders, thank you for giving us an opportunity this evening to make a special presentation. Temecula is a city that we all love, and one of the hallmarks of the City of Temecula is the willingness of its citizens to serve one another, from least to greatest, and we love this city because of that. As members of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and by the way, I forgot to introduce myself, Tracy Hamm, I am the President of the 13 congregations of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here in Temecula. We, we so value service to our community and the concept of serving one another. It's my privilege this evening to present the 2018 Just Serve Award to an outstanding citizen who's given much. Alice Sullivan has served our great city for several decades. Her tireless service has made such a difference in our community. She has served on a multitude of committees, including the City of Temecula Site Visitation Committee, Measure C Committee for Parks and Recreation, Race for Humanity and Community Recreation Center Foundation Board. Also, as CEO of the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, she spends countless hours attending and supporting various business and nonprofit events, always greeted by her friendly smile and warmth. She takes the time to learn about you and about your family. She lends her influence to enrich our community and is quick to mentor and encourage those around her. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and JustServe.org would like to recognize Alice Sullivan as the 2018 Just Serve Award recipient, thanking her for her leadership, dedication, and selfless service that has touched the lives of so many in the City of Temecula. Alice, if you'll come forward, please.
Alice, you're free to say something. Thank you very much. I often say that this is such an incredible community, and it didn't just happen, right? It was all of our leadership throughout the years when we became a city, and all the people up here, the city staff, the city council, the past city council members, our community is filled with volunteers, and I am just humbled and thankful for this award. I thank my incredible staff, my board of directors, and thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Alice, if you would both stay there for a second, my colleague Councilmember Ron would like to say a few words, soon as you're done with your photo. All right, come on back. Councilmember Ron.
Just a, just a quick one. You know, when this came across my desk last year, the nomination forms, your name immediately came to the front of my mind, and it's been an absolute honor and, and privilege to be able to work with you over the last four years. I'm, I'm glad you all selected Alice as the recipient for this year, and I think she embodies exactly what that means for the City of Temecula, so congratulations, and we look forward to so much more from you this year.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards.
But wait, there's more. So in addition to everything that, that Tracy said about you, I want everybody that's watching and everyone that's here to know that we have an opportunity to get to know council members, really, all over the state, if we're California League of Cities, you know, representatives, so, and along with council members, we often talk about our chambers of commerce, and I am one of the first people to say, we have a chamber of commerce that is the top. I mean, I would put our chamber against any chamber in the country, and it's exemplified by the amount of members that we have, and it's a direct tribute to your leadership. And another sign of a good leader is the people that work for them, and your staff is so awesome, and you know, it starts at the top, so we, everyone needs to know that we have a chamber of commerce that's amazing, and over 1,000 members in our city, and so thank you for that, Alice, and it's all because of you. Thank you. We're actually, okay, I'm going to do a, a quick pitch. We're going to be launching a buy-local campaign. Really, everyone in our community should buy local, so that we can keep our businesses in business, and also we'll be starting a auto, auto program for our membership, for our, our members to be able to call that one-on-one salesperson and get that care that they deserve, so, thank you. Buy local. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Alice. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is David Maddox.
David, welcome tonight.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'd just like to provide some additional context for the written comments I submitted yesterday, which detailed a handful of items that I'd like to see added to our 2019 legislative platform. As our Director of Legislative Affairs wrote in her agenda report on this item, "We can expect to see an increase in the number of bills this year addressing the issue of homelessness." Hand in hand with that, I suspect that we'll also see an increased legislative focus on California's housing shortage. Last year, there were about a dozen bills related to housing, and a couple of them would have been really problematic for us if they had passed. There's an ongoing effort in Sacramento right now to give the state the power to supplant local zoning restrictions, particularly around freeways, transit stations, and bus stops. Now, this conflicts with one of the guiding principles of our platform, which is the preservation of local control. There's also been a push to condition transportation funding on housing requirements set by the state, which is worrisome, because it could make those funding streams less reliable. state, which is worrisome because it could make those funding streams less reliable. Now, voters did approve a state constitutional amendment last June, which prohibits the state from diverting transportation money away from transportation programs, but this doesn't prevent the state from delaying or withholding those funds. So, I think all of these issues should be placed on our watch list. I also submitted a couple of suggestions that really just reflect the actions already taken by our Economic Development Committee and the I-15 Task Force. I know everybody here is dedicated to seeing those efforts through, and we really don't need it written down for us, but when we distribute our platform to our state and federal lobbyists, I really think there should be some kind of statement in there emphasizing our vision for the I-15 corridor. That's all I wanted to add for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just before you leave, a couple of things back to you. First of all, you sent an email to our city clerk that was shared with the city council.
Right.
We read it, and you have made a lot of good comments. Some of what's in our legislative platform is time-sensitive.
Yes.
And there are other people, like at the California League of Cities, et cetera, needing things right away. So, what I want you to do is, because it's not likely we'll change it tonight just because of the sensitivity, but your comments are good. If you can communicate with the city clerk and let her kind of brief you on what some of the things are going on that actually directly address what you talked about, like the I-15 corridor.
Right.
Doing amazing things, and state transportation funds, amazing things. So, I thank you for coming forward.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any more public comments? I don't think so.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you so much. We go to the portion of the meeting where we have city council reports. Anybody of my council colleagues? Councilmember Swank.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a slide that I'd like to show. Our family attended a couple of events over the busy holiday season. There's many to attend, but I was lucky enough to ring in the nine o'clock grape drop with you, so I appreciate you calling me up there. But this was a picture of the crowd. It was just a packed event. It's such a fun night, a ton of families, a ton of people out, people skating, and just enjoying our community. I just want to say a huge thanks to staff and everyone, all the work that goes into that event. It showed. It was a fun event. And then the High Hopes New Year's Eve celebration, we volunteered at that event. There was well over 100 in attendance. It was just a fun event. So, again, kudos to the Mary Phillips Senior Center staff and volunteers and all the people that come into that, come into that event. It just, again, was a really fun night for everyone involved. As you can see, everyone has a smile on their face, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron.
Oh, God, put me on the -- you looked at me, and you're like, "Do you have anything to say tonight?" And I was like, "No, I'm okay." And then you picked on me, so now I feel obligated. So, no, I have nothing. Thanks, though.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. I think I have to read this. Yes, thank you. "All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes from December 11, 2018. Three, approve listed demands, that's the checks the city writes. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of October 31, 2018. Five, approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the County of Riverside to increase patrol coverage for the city. Six, approve annual legislative platform for calendar year 2019. Seven, receive report regarding status of existing vacancies on the Community Services Commission. Eight, annual boards and commissions handbook for calendar year 2019. Nine, approve annual citywide records retention schedule and records destruction for calendar year 2019. Ten, authorize the mayor to execute the amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WRCOG." Let's see here. Eleven, approve U.S. House of Representatives District Office lease at Temecula Civic Center. Twelve, approve the amended salary schedule to include the classification of water safety instructor. Thirteen, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with ESGIL for plan check services for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Fourteen, approve an agreement with Fairview Ford Sales, Inc. for the purchase of one Ford F-550 XL Sign Truck. Fifteen, approve an agreement for maintenance services with U.S. National Corp. for painting maintenance services. Sixteen, approve an agreement for consultant services with Michael Baker International, Inc. for the traffic signal and park-and-ride access improvements, known as PW, Public Works 18-11. Seventeen, award a construction contract to California Waters Development, Inc., doing business as California Waters for community recreation center pool site enhancement and renovations, Public Works 1802. Almost there, folks. Eighteen, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with Crosstown Electrical and Data, Inc. for on-call maintenance and repair of closed-circuit television cameras and communication equipment. Would any of my colleagues like to pull anything or make a motion?
Move approval.
That was moved by Councilmember Ron and seconded by Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart, because I'm hard of hearing in my left ear, Mary Ann.
That's okay.
Okay. All in favor? Second your motion there, Stuart. Please cast your vote. And that passes 5-0. Now's the portion in the meeting where I'm going to adjourn the Temecula City Council meeting for a moment and turn over the gavel to President James Stu Stewart of the Temecula Community Service District.
I will call this meeting the order of the Temecula Community Service District. Madam Clerk, please note that all directors are here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Perfect. We have one agenda item on the consent calendar. "All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be, will be enacted on one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless a member of the Temecula Community Services District requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action." Item number 19 is to approve the action minutes for December 11, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right. Do we have any directors' reports?
Well, first of all, welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And coming off of a magical holiday season, just a simple thank you to the residents, city council, and definitely our fellow city departments, and that's from police to Public Works, fire to finance, IT and code, and everyone in between for making 2018 another family-friendly year of safe and fun events and activities. So, looking forward to another eventful 2019, and that concludes my report.
Perfect. Do we have a general manager's report?
Mr. President, just simply a thank you to the TCSD staff, but also all the operating departments and police and fire for the last 30 days of support for special events and another amazing closeout to 2018, so my thanks as well.
Any board of directors' reports? None? Okay, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Move adjournment.
Second.
So, do I need to take a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, adjourned.
Great job.
Very good, Stu.
Stu! There you go. All right. So, I'm going to convene the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency meeting. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect that all agency members are present. Do we have any public comments?
Do not.
Okay. So, we do have one item on the consent calendar. Just a point of order, Mr. City Attorney, do we have to read the rules each time, or is that your preference?
No, you don't have two for this one.
Okay, sounds good. So, we're going to move over to the consent calendar. We have two items. Approve the action minutes from December 11, 2018. And 21, approve/recognize obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, ROPS 19-20. And that's it.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Swank. Please cast your vote. And that passes 5-0. Do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
Any of our board of directors have anything to say? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn, or move to adjourn, the SARDA meeting till Tuesday, January 22. Could I have a quick motion?
Approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned with SARDA. Now, we're going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. Let the record reflect, Madam Clerk, that all agency members, and financing authority members are present. Do we have any public comments? Okay. All right, so let me get my act together, because this is a little bit of a tricky one here with several moving parts. Okay. All right. We do not have any public comments. You just give great notes, Madam City Clerk. This is really, really good. Okay. We're moving to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Since this is a public hearing, I have to read the rules. "Any person may submit written comments to the board of directors before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing." Let's see here. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman of Guard Directors, "The CFD formation being considered this evening is consistent with the council's prior direction and policy that requires any development proposal that increases the demand for public services, be it public safety, police, fire, public horse maintenance services, that'd be our streets, sidewalks, storm drains, parks, et cetera. They will need to offset the city's increase in cost to providing those services. To satisfy this condition of approval, the owner of the Cypress Ridge Development, TriPoint Homes, requested the city, as the Temecula Public Financing Authority, or TPFA, form a new community facilities district to finance police and fire protection services along with other municipal services, as allowed under the Community Facilities Act of 1982, also known as Melo-Ruse Act. Kaiser-Marston Associates performed a fiscal impact analysis on this 245-unit residential development that's being constructed at the northeast corner of Pachanga Parkway and Loma Linda Road to determine the fiscal impact to the city. The city's financial advisor, Webb Municipal Finance, used this information to develop a rate and method of an apportionment that will allow the development to offset its impacts through the collection of a special tax paid annually via the annual property tax bill. A unique aspect of this particular CFD is that it's annexable. This allows future developments with fiscal impacts to offset their impacts in the same manner through a much more streamlined process." Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Our consultant from Webb Finance is in the audience here to answer any questions, and I believe you have a copy of the formal order of proceedings to be followed to complete the formation process.
Sounds good. Now's the time for any questions. Questions only of staff, if any of my colleagues have. I don't see any questions. So, Mayor, state the following. That's the instruction to me. Okay, this is now --
State your name.
This is now the time and place for the public hearing in this board of directors proceeding for the Temecula Public Financing Authority, Community Facilities District Number 19-01, Municipal Services. The hearing is to inquire into the formation of the district and the levy of special taxes on property in the district. The hearing is also to inquire into the possible future annexation of territory to the district. Before I formally open the public hearing, are there any owners of property in the district or registered voters who reside in the district who wish to file written protests against the formation of the district or the special tax levy? Are there any persons who wish to file written protests against the possible future annexation of territory to the district? Any written protests must be filed with the city clerk as the secretary of the authority now. Pause to see if there -- All right, are there anybody who wish to file any protests?
How many times have you done this now?
Now, this is, this is a tricky one, okay? Because it's a brand-new CFD.
I think he's done this four times, five times?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I do not see any protests. I pause to see if there are any protests. The public hearing is now officially open. She even has down here hit the gavel, okay? I'm not kidding.
No chance for error.
No, not at all. Does anyone in the audience wish to make any comments on this matter? Receive public comments, if any. Madam City Clerk, is anybody registered to desire to speak?
We have no one from the public registered to speak on this item.
Okay. And I think since the public hearing is open, and this seems to be a very meticulous process, I will open it up to the public if you haven't filed a, any request to speak. Is anybody in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Okay, I don't see anybody. So, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion adopting the following two resolutions, and I'm going to read them out. "A resolution of the board of directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority of formation of a Temecula Public Financing Authority, Community Facilities District Number 19-01, Municipal Services, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the district, preliminarily establishing an appropriations limit for the district, submitting levy of the special tax, and the establishment of the appropriations limit to the qualified electors of the district, and providing for the future annexation of territory to the district." Next, "A resolution of the board of directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority calling special election within Community Facilities District Number 19-01 for Municipal Services." City staff have advised me that at present --
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We will go ahead and now take a motion on those two resolutions as you read.
Very good, thank you. Before we do take that motion, it's also time for council comments on those two, if you'd like to.
Only one comment, and it's, at times like this, I like to make it very clear that it's not the city necessarily imposing this upon other people. It's only done for this particular district because we don't want our existing residents to have to pay for infrastructure that is now necessary because new residents are moving into this development. So, every development has to pay its own way so that it does not impact our existing residents, and that's what this is.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'm going to accentuate what you said. Our residents passed a Measure S for public safety. That was because our public safety costs went up in a dire way. At the same time, in good conscience, we could not go ahead and allow new development to take advantage of the tax passed by our residents when they bring in, let's say, a general plan amendment or a zone change on a piece of property that is going to further use our police, fire service, and other public services. They, as Councilmember Edward says, has to pay their own way. This allows for us to levy a tax on their property at their request and their willingness so that they pay their fair share and existing residents are not burdened.
They know that when they purchase --
And they know that when they're processing it, and it's also a condition of any general plan amendment or zone change. So, I will ask for a motion.
Move approval.
That was made by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart. Please cast your vote. Okay. That passes 5-0. City staff have advised me that at present, there is only one owner of land in the district, and only that landowner was entitled to cast the ballot in the election. At this time, I ask the city clerk, as secretary of the Public Financing Authority, to open the ballot. Are you opening the ballot? Okay, thank you. Of the sole landowner and announce the results of the election. Pause for opening of ballot.
Did that. Mr. Mayor?
A little prematurely, okay?
Mr. Mayor, the property owner did vote yes.
Okay, very good. Six, city clerk opens the ballot and announces results of election. Seven, mayor, state the following. "The results of the election being in favor of the levy of the special taxes for the district and the establishment of the appropriations limit for the district, we may now proceed with the final actions for the district." I need a motion adopting the following resolution and approving the first reading of the following ordinance, my colleagues. "A resolution of the board of directors of the Temecula Public Financing Authority declaring results of special election and directing recording of notice of special tax lien, Community Facility District Number 19-01, Municipal Services, and," here's the ordinance, "an ordinance of the Temecula Public Financing Authority levying --" levying, levying special taxes within Temecula Public Financing Authority, Community Facilities District nineteen dash zero one, Municipal Service.
Move approval.
That was moved by Councilmember Edward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Please cast your votes. And that passes five zero. Um, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes this item. Thank you for your patience through a very tedious process, uh, my colleagues and the audience. Um, we're gonna move on to item twenty-two. Uh, adopt resolutions.
Mister Mayor, that was item number twenty-two.
Got it. Alright, let's see. Thank you. And that means I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting till January twenty-second.
Move approval.
That was Edwards. Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alright, we're gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. It's a time for city council business. Okay, item twenty-three. Amend and restate the City of Temecula Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan. Can we have a short staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you today is related to the city's Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan, through which employee benefits are administered. It's a housekeeping measure that is required to allow the city to continue providing existing benefits on a pre-tax basis under the IRS Code Section one twenty-five. Additionally, over the years, the health industry has changed the way benefits have been offered to employees, and staff is recommending that the, the plan be updated to include those benefit offerings and ensure they are in compliance with the tax code. Staff's recommendation is not reducing or enhancing any benefits today. Rather, the update will allow for employees to take advantage of certain benefits in the future that have been added under the tax code since the city last updated these planned documents. That concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Nope.
Alright, seeing no questions, Madam City Clerk, are there any requests to speak? Okay, then we'll move to city council discussion or a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
So that was moved by Councilmember Edward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Um, please cast your vote. That item passes five zero. Item number twenty-four, selection of twenty nineteen council committees. Can we have a staff report, please?
Mister Mayor, very briefly, this is our annual process whereby the City Council reviews all of the standing and ad hoc subcommittees, and we request that the City Council go ahead and review the same and provide direction.
Thank you. Um, I don't presume there's any questions of staff. If, if my council colleagues were allowing me, I liked how, um, uh, last year's Mayor Matt Ron proceeded to do this. I, I think, maybe I'll make some recommendations, uh, and we'll just kind of breeze through this. If not, uh, with my recos, you guys float whatever you want. Commission liaison, one member. We are, uh, no longer have Councilmember Comacherel for Community Services Commission. I'm gonna recommend, it's typically the president of the commission who's also the liaison, so I would recommend, um, President Stewart and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart for that. Does anybody, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Old Town Local Review Board was Councilmember Stewart. I think maybe Councilmember Schwank would do good at that. Anybody okay with that? Councilmember?
Yeah, that's great.
Alright, sounds good. Planning Commission, I'd like to continue, if that's okay with my colleagues. And, uh, Public Traffic Safety Commission is Councilmember Edwards. Do you still wanna do that?
Yes.
Do you guys wanna consent, uh, staff wanna consensus vote on, on each one of these block items?
Uh, we can just take one vote at the end. Um, that's fine. Mister Mayor, I did wanna note for Planning Commission purposes and vacancies on the Planning Commission, since you are the mayor, and also the Planning Commission Liaison staff will utilize the subcommittee of the mayor and the mayor pro tem by default.
Sense, sounds good. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so we've clarified the commission liaisons. Now the standing committees, typically having, uh, two members. Arts and Cultural Affairs Subcommittee was Edwards and Comacherel. Madam Edwards, do you wanna continue on that? Does anybody have a desire to do that? Um, I'm looking toward Councilmember Stewart or, or Schwank.
I, I would love to if, if, uh, no one else wants to.
Okay, so that will be Councilmember Schwank, only because I know, it must be Councilmember Ron.
No, I'm good.
Oh, you're okay?
He's being real quiet down at this end.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Uh, okay. Let's see. City Sustainability Program Subcommittee, it's currently Ron and Stewart. Do you guys wanna keep that? Okay. Uh, E-Government, and, and, and by the way, if somebody has a desire to serve on a committee, speak up. I, I mean, nothing's in stone, and we can have that discussion. And my recommendations are just that, recommendations. Uh, E-Government and Temecula Outreach Committee is Edwards and Stewart.
Good.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Economic Development Subcommittee, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart expressed an interest in it, and Councilmember Edwards is on that. Is everybody okay with, with that selection? Okay, sounds good. Old Town Steering Committee is myself and Councilmember Ron. I'm okay with staying on that. Councilmember?
I'm, I'm okay jumping off if, uh, Mister Schwank wants to, uh, get on that one.
Yeah, I'll jump on.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So that'll be Nagar and Schwank. Uh, the Finance Subcommittee is Councilmember Edwards and Stewart. Wanna keep it?
Yep.
Sounds good. The Infrastructure Beautification Committee is again Edwards and Stewart. It's like Burns and Allen and, you know, Martin and Lewis. Okay, Joint City Council, Temecula Valley Subcommittee, that's Edwards and Stewart.
Point of order, Mister, Mister City Attorney, I am an employee of the school district. Can I serve on this committee?
It would probably not. Probably be best to have somebody else serve on that committee.
Alrighty.
And Councilmember Stewart, you wanted to say something? Yeah. Give it to Matt. Uh, so in place of you?
Cause you're still on there, Stu.
Oh, I'm still on it.
Yeah, you're still on.
In addition.
Can, can Mister Schwank do it?
He can't either.
No, because he works, okay.
I mean, by default.
Then it's us.
It's us, we win. Alright, it's easy.
Yeah, and it's, and, you know, I have a child, special needs child in the district. It probably wouldn't be fair, um, for me to be on it. So that will be, uh, that will be Stewart and Ron. Alrighty. Military Subcommittee, we lost, uh, Comacherel, so it's Stewart. And who would like to serve on that?
I'd be interested in serving on that.
If there's no objection, that'll be Ron and Stewart.
So be it.
Okay.
Well, hold on. Would, were you leaning in like you'd wanna do it?
No.
Cause I could back out and let you have it.
Uh, if it's something that you would wanna relinquish, sure, I would, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, let, let, let him.
Okay, so the Military Subcommittee will be Schwank and Ron. Got that, staff? Okay, great, cause that's a wholesale change. Move I fifteen through Temecula Valley Subcommittee. You know what? Uh, Doctor Ron and I have made tremendous progress. You're gonna get an update, and it's pretty cool. So, uh, I'd like to keep that the same. Looks like our colleagues are in agreement. Marietta, Temecula Subcommittee, that's Edwards, Nagar. I'm cool if we keep it. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Committee, we have Councilmember Stewart.
Zach?
I'd love to be a part of that, for sure.
Okay, sounds good. You're on. Public Works Subcommittee, that's Edwards and Stewart.
Um, it's fine with me.
Yeah, okay. I'm saying, you guys have quite a few things together. Uh, Southwest Cities, uh, Coalition Subcommittee, that's Edwards and Ron. We good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Regional Cancer Treatment, uh, Task Force, that's Edwards and Nagar. We're wrapping that effort up. Again, council will be pleased. I think no changes are required there. So that ends, uh, standing committees, Madam Clerk. Going to representative assignments. Animal Shelter Liaison, that's Bidden. Councilmember Edwards has done a great job.
Well, except Mister Mayor, I have loved serving on this, and I have been on it since day one, uh, before we even built the shelter, but because of my employment, I cannot get away during the middle of the day or during work hours, so I'm afraid I have to give this one up as much as I do not want to.
Well, um, I'll open it up to, um, Doctor Ron, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, or Schwank.
It's a good one.
So is it a daytime meeting?
Yeah, it's usually, like, two o'clock in the afternoon. It's in Marietta, at Marietta City Hall, and it's a consortium of five cities plus Riverside County, cause we all share the use of that animal shelter, which we all pay for.
Uh, what day of the week does it go?
So, uh, you know, I can't remember if it's, I don't remember, Stu, sorry.
I can do any day but Friday.
It wasn't Fridays.
Okay. I mean, if, if everybody else has full-time jobs, if they can't get away, I can, I can do it.
Alright, so let's make that, um, Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Stewart.
And if, and if it turns out that it, it isn't on Friday, I don't think, but if it turns out that it is...
Okay, League of California Cities Voting Delegate. Typically, we make those the, the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Fine.
Okay, so that would be me, and in my absence, the mayor pro tem, and in the absence of both of us, we can appoint somebody, correct?
Uh, Mister Mayor, over the last couple of years, we have utilized Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Ron because they attend the League of California Cities meeting, and Councilmember Edwards happens to be the division, is also linked to the division, uh, committee.
But I can't do it anymore because I, it's, I would have to leave to attend those meetings during the day. The, after, the Executive Committee usually meets early, fairly late in the afternoon, but still during work hours.
Okay, and this is, again, just the voting delegates for both the League of California Cities, uh, conferences.
Well, I can do, I can do voting, voting delegates if I, if I can attend the conference.
So, so, but they have to be there to vote, correct?
Correct.
In all honesty, um, Councilmember Ron is a lobbying machine, and he's in Sacramento, uh, or, or typically where the meetings are held. I, I mean, I, I think you should keep it, if that's okay with you.
Except that I've been doing it.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Are you good with that?
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, so we'll make that Councilmember Ron. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
On this end, okay.
And, and for the alternate, I'm sorry, Mister Mayor, for the alternate, can we please designate someone?
You betcha. Um, does anybody have a pleasure?
Is it a daytime? Cause once again, I'm available during the day, so...
If you have to go to the conferences, two days, three days?
Up in Sacramento typically.
It's the League Annual Conference, um, and it rotates between Northern California and Southern California. It's, um, whoever, whichever council members are planning on being there. Last couple of years, it's been Councilmember Edwards and, uh, Mayor Ron. Um, the alternate would only need to step up in the event that the main person was not able to.
Okay, I'll be the alternate, yeah.
Sounds good. The National League, um, you know, uh, Councilmember Comacherel served so well on that. And we left, just left him on that, whether he was mayor or not, but typically, it was the mayor and the mayor pro tem as representative and the alternate. I may go this year, but on, on, on one hand, um, and they rotate that different cities, don't they?
That is also, um, the annual conference, um, different cities throughout all fifty states. For consistency, if you would like to do, um, the League of California Cities and the National League the same, we can always go ahead and redesignate at a later date if we find out other council members are going. It's up to you. I know Councilmember Ron is in Washington DC a lot. It's up to you.
Yeah, so we have, on National League, you have, you have usually two meetings a year. I think there's one in March, and then, and that's...
This is for the annual conference.
Okay.
And they usually, i- if you serve...
Is that in DC? The annual is in...
It actually moves. This last year, it happened to be in Los Angeles. Um, previous years, it's been in Ohio. It's been in, I mean, it just...
And isn't, isn't there one that's held every year in DC?
That's Lobbying Day.
It's the Conference of Mayors, US Conference of Mayors.
Okay, so Councilmember Ron, again, you're in DC a lot, and you do some great lobbying. If you desire it, keep it. It's just a matter of casting the vote, and frankly, even if I go, I don't need to cast the vote. You can cast it. And you're probably more likely to be there than I am. You want that?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so that'll be Councilmember Ron on both of those. Next is, uh, Pachanga Tribal Council Representative.
Mister Mayor, I'm sorry for the alternate. Um, would you like me to, um, have you as the alternate, since you've indicated you may be attending?
Yeah, and, uh, if the need comes up to change that, we can talk about it. Very good, thank you. Pachanga Tribal Council Rep, um, I'd like to continue doing that.
I would like to do that one.
You know, can I chime in on that one? I think historically, Mike, uh, that had just been a single individual, and then...
Right.
There was some discrepancy, uh, a few years ago. I'm wondering if maybe we should just go back to a...
Yeah, and, and I was gonna recommend that, um, Councilmember Edwards, is that, is that okay with you? Um, you know what happened was both, uh, Councilmember Comacherel and I, having our tenure, um, it's just something he wanted to do. And I said, sure, go ahead, but really, it moves along quite better if it's one-on-one. Um, so thank you. And, uh, our relationship with the tribe has never been better. Uh, they are just wonderful to work with. Rancho California Water District Lia- uh, Liaison, that's, uh, Stewart with alternate Ron. You wanna stay on that, uh, Councilmember Stewart? Okay, and Councilmember Ron?
Uh, I'm okay jumping off that one.
Okay, so we need an alternate. I'm gonna recommend, uh, Councilmember Schwank.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, did you want? Are you humming?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you were...
Uh-uh.
Alrighty. Temecula Valley Unified School District Liaison, but I think we already...
Yep, I'm out.
We already did that one, didn't we, up top?
Actually, this is, this is a different one. This is a, um, representative assignment directly to the school district. Um, and on this one, it used to also be the Riverside County Child Safety Commission. So that commission no longer exists, so we're only looking for a TV USD liaison, and I imagine the conflicts that were stated earlier and above will be...
How is this different from the standing committee we just appointed, um, up, up above?
I think the standing committee was established any time there was a joint city-school district project that needed representation. And I think this one, I don't know why the other one couldn't serve, you know, couldn't have served as this one also, but I think the school district liaison was just, uh, this person, I served as a point of contact if they wanted to address the council or anything like that. There's really no reason for them to be separate.
So we appointed, I think it was Stewart and Schwank as, uh, to the, or Stewart and Ron. I think it probably for some sort of consistency. I'm gonna recommend you, Mister Stewart. Is that okay?
Sure.
Uh, Mister Ron, is that okay with you?
Yep.
Alright, thanks. Um, okay. Southwest Riverside County Energy Authority, Edwards and Stewart.
I'll jump off for, if Mister Schwank wants to do that.
That's good.
Alright, uh, council member?
Yeah.
Okay, that will be Edwards and Schwank. Temecula Sister City Liaison, Stewart?
Yeah, I'd like to stay.
Like to stay on that? Okay, sounds good. Alright, representative assignments to external organizations. RCA Representative, that's Miss Edwards. Are you staying on that?
No, but I would be willing to go to the, uh, alternate if Stu wants to jump up and do it. And it is during, it is during the week, but not Fridays.
I do, I, I wanna tell you, um, Councilmember Stewart, this is a very important position because it deals with a lot of environmental issues, and if you watch the alter, well, you were here for the Alter. You can see how, how that played into it, and, uh, Councilmember Edwards, you did a great job being on this council and interacting with your board, uh, on the RCA, so just wanna let you know, there's, there's work involved in this one. I mean, not that you wouldn't work, but I'm just saying.
I can give you a brief of it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, if everybody's okay, that'll be Councilmember Stewart, and the alternate is, um, Councilmember Edwards. Okay. Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, didn't that get dissolved?
No.
No, it just was moved under, uh, WR cog.
Okay, so we wanna make that Stewart and Edwards, cause it's kind of related to the RCA.
It is related, um, and they're working on the delisting of the kangaroo rat right now, so it's really interesting.
Okay, so I think it needs to go hand-in-hand. We'll make that Stewart and Edwards the alternate. Everybody okay? Alright, very good. Uh, RCTC, that's me. I just got appointed to the executive committee, and, uh, we gotta make sure we snag our SB one funds.
Yeah.
And we are, and we're also got some things going on with, um, other French Valley improvements, so, um, continuity, I think I need to stay.
I'm good.
Okay.
That reminds me, if we could just go back for a second, I'm on the executive committee of each of the agencies that I was on, but that doesn't necessarily mean when you go representing the city that you will take that position. They're, they're chosen by the chairperson and the board, so I just wanna give you a heads up. That's just one less trip you have to make.
Right, one less meeting.
Yeah.
But then after a while, if your colleagues like you, whatever, they put you on the executive board.
And it is really rewarding.
Um, in fact, it brings to mind, um, former council member and county supervisor Chuck Waschington, who just, you know, he headed up WR cog last year. Now he's the chair of, uh, RCTC. Man works, uh, entirely hard. Riverside Transit Agency Representative.
I love this one, but same story.
Can you move to alternate? Cause I, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
Yeah, I can, I can move to alternate.
Okay, so Edwards is the alternate. I'm gonna refer to Schwank or Stewart.
Is this also a daytime?
And I was on three different subcommittees for this one.
This is a, a good one. I mean, you're dealing with busing and transportation. It's, it's pretty cool.
This is the best-run agency, I would, I would put him up in, anybody in the country. It's a fabulously-run agency.
Okay, uh, so that will be Schwank with the alternate Stewart. WR cog Executive Committee, um, Edwards, are you gonna give that one up too?
Um, yeah, I have to.
Okay. Boy, I was on this, and I gave it up to you.
I don't...
Just cause it was time-consuming and, and me being on RCTC.
I'm on executive on this one, too.
This, um, pardon me, are you?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. This, being on WR cog, I just, for, for the benefit of, of, of you two gentlemen, cause you may not have been exposed to it, you're there with, with representatives, as with RTA, from all the... You're there with, with representatives, as with RTA, from all the cities, and, uh, WR cog does some good work, and a great time to network. Um, at the same time, we need strong representation, so it's something that if you, put it this way, if you take it, you gotta stay on it for a while, because, um, it's really, you develop a voice.
Yeah.
You develop a voice, and if you keep, people get on and off, you end up, nobody listens to you, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind stepping up and doing this one.
It's a good one.
Are you okay?
I'm totally okay with that, I think you'd be a great fit, yeah.
Are you okay?
Mm-hmm.
And councilmember Ron, you good? Okay, sounds good. That takes care of representative assignments.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I just wanna be clear on that last one, who, the alternate is, is.
It's, uh, it's, it's, Schwank is alternate, Stewart is representative, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right. All right, Ad hoc Committee Alter, uh, that was, uh, Comacherow-Nagar, I'm gonna recommend, uh, Ron and Nagar, if that's okay? Matt?
Yep, happy to do it.
All right, sounds good. Cannabis Ad hoc Committee, uh, that's Nagar and Ron, I'm gonna suggest we keep it, there's continuity there, and no reason to change, if everybody's okay. Community Services Funding Ad hoc Committee, that was Stewart and Comacherow.
I'm good with that one, I've done it before.
You have.
And it's local.
Is anybody, uh, object to that? I think, Marianne, you'd be great, you've done it with me for years.
Years, years.
Yeah, okay, so that will be Edwards and Stewart, on, uh, Community Funding Ad hoc Subcommittee. DS Property Ad hoc, it was Comacherow-Nagar, I'm gonna recommend Ron and Nagar, but I'm open, what's your pleasure, Matt?
Uh, that'd be great, I think I'd provide a little more continuity.
Okay, um, anybody, any, any problem with that, okay? Um, French Valley Parkway Interchange Ad hoc Subcommittee is Nagar and Ron, and this has a lot to do with what we're doing, um, with, uh, move I-15 forward. Uh, we probably should keep that the same, okay? General Plan Update Ad hoc Subcommittee, we'll, we'll take that up later, I presume, Madam City Clerk, or you wanna do it now?
Actually, if we could do it now, that'd be great.
Okay, this is a, this is a lot of work, uh, I mean, the general plan, you know, it's gonna take three, four years, three years, something like that. Lot of meetings, meetings with the public. Councilmember Edwards, are you in?
Um, yeah, I'm okay with that one, uh, depending on the time of day, but we have control over the time of day that those meetings are established, so I'll be all right.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that one as well.
It's a good one.
Um, can I recommend that, that, that the two senior members over there, uh, take that? Uh, i- it's a lot of work and a lot of history's important.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that okay? Sounds good, all right, so that's Ron and, uh, Edwards.
Well, Matt spent half his life in school, so I think he's good for this one.
Yeah, and this is a real important one.
Yeah.
Uh, very important. Uh, Higher Education Ad hoc Subcommittee, that's Nagar and Ron, I see no reason to change, unless, Matt, you want off?
Nope.
All right, Hospital Ad hoc Subcommittee, that's Nagar and Ron as well. Like to keep it. Human Services Ad hoc Subcommittee, that's Edwards and Stewart, are you guys good with staying? Okay, good. Infill Land Use and Project Review, it's been, uh, Ron and Nagar, and I think we have continuity, you good, Matt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, Luxury Car Dealership, we lost Comacherow, and that was Comacherow and Ron, anybody like to serve on that?
I, I, I can do that one, since it's local.
Okay.
If you don't want to.
Um, nah, not particularly, I mean, I, it's okay.
Okay.
Um, is anybody else have an interest? Okay, so that'll be Edwards and Ron. Okay, Marietta Creek Project Ad hoc Subcommittee, that's Edwards-Nagar, I don't know what's really going on with that, we might as well just keep it.
Yeah.
Can I, uh, jump in on that one? There's been a lot of activity this last year in, in DC, and advocated quite a bit for a lot of, uh, issues, and just sort of coincidentally happened to be in the Capitol when everything was falling apart on the project on several occasions this last year. Um, I, I kinda felt like they thought I lived there or something, 'cause it was just really just, uh, amazing timing every time that fell through. And so I've developed quite a relationship with the Army Corps and, and others on this, so, uh.
You're a natural.
Yeah, I'd be interested in serving, just to, just to make sure, I mean, you know, we're coming to the close of, of what needs to be done here on, at least Phase, uh, Phase Two, and then going back to Phase One, and advocating for two B and so forth, so, yeah.
So, I think a natural is you, councilmember Ron, that leaves me, and if anybody wants this, I'd be willing to give it up, or continue to serve, whatever.
I, I wouldn't mind doing that, actually.
Okay, I'm good with it, so that will make that, uh, Ron and Schwank.
Okay, so cross me and Zach.
Okay, Old Town Civic Center Ad hoc Committee, I'd like to stay on this, 'cause I'm on these Old Town Committees, um, and it's continuity, but we lost Comacherow. Anybody else have a desire?
It's Schwank's district.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, then, sure, I think you should be on it, let's make that Schwank-Nagar. Ramenod in Temecula Ad hoc Subcommittee, that was Comacherow and Edwards.
I like that one.
All right, you stay on that, um, who else wants to do that?
It's good, they're gonna be going through renovations again.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, that'll be Schwank and Edwards. Public Safety Ad hoc Committee, I know councilmember Ron, you wanna stay on that, Edwards, you cool, wanna stay on that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, Public Safety Recognition Ad hoc Subcommittee, again, councilmember Ron, I know your heart's there, Madam Edwards.
Yeah.
You're good, okay, good. Royal Power Ranch Ad hoc Subcommittee, that was Edwards and Comacherow. Um, I don't know how much there is to do there, but stuff comes up, so, um, who has a desire to join, councilmember Edwards?
Since that's in my district, maybe I'll just jump on that.
I, I think that's a good idea, let's make that Stewart and Edwards. Service Level Assessments Ad hoc Subcommittee, do you wanna do that tonight, Ms., Ms. City Clerk? Uh, can you describe a little bit of what that is?
I mean, the title is riveting, so.
Yeah. As indicated in the staff report, the Service Level Assessments Ad hoc Subcommittee, the SIP committee will provide staff direction regarding landscape maintenance zones throughout the city. Proposals for new assessments, public outreach, and recommendations to the full city council. The term of this subcommittee will be through the completion of the Proposition 218 process through December 2019.
Who would like to be on that committee?
Oh, count me in.
Okay.
Zach wants to do it.
A good majority of this work is gonna take place between tomorrow. And probably April, May, 'cause, 'cause deadlines that need to be hit, is that correct, Pat?
Yes, yeah, and, and what we're looking at is, is our current level of assessments, and looking at some potential changes in that, which is something that would require the Prop 218 process, so.
Can I, can I just make a comment right here?
Sure.
For anybody that's watching, or people in the audience, you're saying, why are you doing this? Because we are a very hands-on city council, and so we're involved with every, virtually every decision that, you know, entails anything having to do with the city. But we are a working council, so we serve on these committees and in these areas of interest, as you've heard today, and I don't know any other city. Some of our local neighbors are starting to do this, uh, working with subcommittees, and really, it's the only way to go. And the only reason we can have, the reason we can only have two people on each subcommittee, is because if we had three people, that would constitute a majority, and we could take over the world in, you know, in those meetings, so that's why we only have two people.
Well said, and, um, yeah, it also kinda demonstrates, uh, councilmember Edwards, that, uh, we do more than just come up here on every other Tuesday.
Yes.
And cast votes. Um, so, back to this subcommittee, uh, that's, councilmember Ron has expressed an interest, um, is there anybody else?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing it.
Okay, so with no objection, we'll go with Ron and Schwank on that one. Short-term vacation rentals, I think Ron and Stewart have done a tremendous job, would you both like to keep it?
Yeah.
And there's continuity involved in that, councilmember Ron, are you good?
Yeah, that was a fun one.
Yeah.
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 And we're not done yet.
We're not done, yeah.
Not even close.
Okay, Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad hoc Committee, that was Comacherow and Edwards.
That one kinda ties in with finance and the other stuff.
So who did we, uh, that was, that was you and Stewart?
Uh.
I think it was you and Stewart on finance. Mr. Stewart, you good with that?
Sure.
Okay. City Clerk, that'll be Stewart and Edwards. Supportive Housing Services Ad hoc Committee, Nagar and Ron. Um, enlighten me, I forgot what that was.
That's what we just met on.
Like affordable housing business, today.
We just, like, four hours ago.
You gotta throw me under the bus?
I am, just a little bit, yeah.
You know, you could've just explained.
It was such a riveting meeting, you were just overwhelmed.
My gosh. Uh, yeah, I knew that, I just wanted to see if you knew. Okay. I think under the circumstances, since we just met today.
I'm not sure we should keep that committee, I'm having some second thoughts, I'd, I'd certainly like to serve again, but, you know, it's up to you, Mr. Nagar.
No, I, I'd like to stay on that.
You've never served on this, I think you should do, I think you should now.
I'm in, guys, count me in, count me in. All right, Teen Village Ad hoc Subcommittee, you know, this is a, I wanna say this is a delicate one, this was touched very deeply in the heart of, of, uh, councilmember Comacherow. Uh, in fact, he regrets not being able on the council to finish this through, so, we have councilmember Stewart. Uh, whoever joins this, I would just ask that they would carry on Jeff's vision.
Well, I think Zach is a natural, because of its relationship to community services.
Yeah, I would absolutely love to be on that.
Okay, so it's gonna be Schwank and Stewart. Um, let's see, Trails and Open Space, I'm gonna recommend Nagar and Ron, we kinda have some momentum going, is that okay, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Um, TV E2, that's our Small Business Incubator, that's Ron and Stewart, um, I see no reason to change. Okay, Uptown Temecula Ad hoc Committee, that was Comacherow and Edwards.
I like that one.
Okay, so we need somebody to replace.
Uh, I'll join you.
Okay, councilmember Schwank.
That one's gonna be really exciting.
Yeah, all right, so that'll be.
Can I say, though, um, given, uh, let me see how to phrase this, so we're not violating any Brown Act issues, but given our, our meeting earlier today, Mike, um, with supportive housing and so forth, I think one of us should probably be on the Uptown Temecula Subcommittee.
Let me inquire of the, of the city attorney, and Peter, you interrupt me. Um, the Supportive Housing Services Ad hoc Subcommittee was dealing with redev- uh, 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 former redevelopment money. Okay, that's, that's sitting in the bank, and what to do with it. A lot of discussion has entailed about what to do with it, and the city council has made an open decision, that's why I think we can talk about it, to preserve those funds for, to try to do something in Uptown.
Right.
All right, and that is what, Mr. Councilmember Ron is referring to. He sees there's a continuity, and I agree, that there's a continuity. The question is, um, should it just, should it be you and I for that contin- continuity? Are you okay?
Yeah, if you really wanna do it.
I, I think there's a continuity involved, um.
It'll still be exciting, Zach, it will.
Okay, well, no, that would be councilmember Ron.
No, I mean, that's why I'm telling him, that, don't worry, it'll be exciting, even if you're not on the committee.
So, so that Uptown Temecula Ad hoc Subcommittee will be Nagar and Ron.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome, a good point. Wall of Honor Ad hoc Subcommittee was Comacherow and Edwards.
Mm-hmm.
Um, who would like to step in? I don't mind stepping in on that.
Okay.
Uh, with the full disclosure, I have nominated, uh, two people, and it's going through the, uh, through the process, could I mention who I nominated, or is that off limits, Pete?
We have to vote on it.
I'd probably just let it work its way through the system.
Okay, fair enough, all right, fair, okay, fair enough, fair enough, okay.
But I think it's good that we both have a long history, because that, those are typically the types, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, so that'll be Nagar and Edwards. Winchester Hills Ad hoc Subcommittee, um.
Whose district is that?
That's, that's Zach's, I believe, because it's next to Harveston, this is Steve Biere's property. Yet at the same time, there's a lot of continuity with the French Valley Parkway and I-15, which is what Matt and I are working with. You know what, uh, how do you feel, Dr. Ron and Schwank? Uh, I can give up, um, Dr. Ron and I can do it, what's your pleasure? I, I think I need to stay on for continuity, there's a lot of history with Steve Biere and that property.
I totally agree.
He, he's checking whether you'd have a personal conflict with the house.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point.
I, I think what you are doing with, you know, I-15 and everything, just, you two take that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Dr. Ron, are you cool with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that'll be, Winchester Hills will be Nagar and Ron. I think that does it, um, Madam City Clerk, I think that does it. Okay, so we'll take a motion for all of those assignments.
Move of approval?
Take it.
That was, um, is that your first motion? Oh, everybody, pause for a second here.
Slid it right in there, too.
Sounds good. That's a motion by, uh, councilmember Schwank, seconded by councilmember Edwards, please cast your vote. Note the time, two a time, is it, it's, uh, eight twenty-five. All right. If you go on to be president or something like that, we're gonna reference this moment. Okay, um, that takes care of that agenda item, and we're getting very close to eight thirty. Um, so, let's go back to our agenda, we're done with city council business. Uh, let's go to, uh, let's see.
Take your time.
I am, okay.
Is there something significant about eight thirty?
No, no, uh, not, not really. Um, we don't usually do departmental reports on, on travel conference.
Mr. Mayor, we do not, uh, our next, um, report would be from the commissions.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, any brief commissioner reports?
I, I was just looking at my notes, and it says to acknowledge the mayor, Mr. Mayor, smile.
Okay, got it.
Ain't no report this evening, and smile, and I'll just add, Lynn, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watts, what's up with the planning commission?
Well, at our last meeting, December nineteenth, I was, uh, unfortunately out of state with the visiting family, but, uh, happy to report that the planning commission enthusiastically approved a drive-through Starbucks at the existing Jiffy Lube, uh, auto facility, uh, in the Palomar Village Center. And that concludes my report.
Lots of refurbishment going on in that center, they have half of it blocked off right now, so, thank you, uh, Mr. Watts. Okay, city manager report.
Public safety.
Public safety report?
Uh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, public safety report, sorry, I missed that, councilmember Ron.
Good evening, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
The fire department, for the month of December, ran over seven hundred and sixty calls. Um, to finish up the Sparkle Love Toy Drive, we ended up panning out over twenty-five hundred toys.
Wow.
To roughly three hundred and ninety-three children, so, turned out to be a really good program. Um, and for the safety tip, this upcoming weekend, we're anticipating a pretty good rainstorm coming through on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, so we do want to remind residents that all fire stations locally do have sandbags, uh, they are unfilled. And we anticipate here in the next couple of days, at the corner of Santiago Road and Inez Road, that we'll have sand available for the local residents, be in the report.
Thank you very much. City manager report.
Nothing tonight.
You sure there's nothing?
Ready to adjourn.
Okay, okay, fair enough, city attorney report.